Motion then to approve the agenda where we go. Animal Control is item one, Cert is item two. Traffic Colony, item three. SCR four and City Manager Contracting Rule five. Second, okay. All right, thank you for that adjustment, everyone. And next up is the approval of minutes from the July twenty fifth City Council meeting. Any questions or comments regarding those minutes? Any public comments regarding those minutes? I see no comments, so back to the council. All right. All right, a second by Councilor Tuttle, all those in favor? Next step is our council reports and committee assignments. And this is the time when the councils report back on the committees, the meetings they've attended or other important topics. I'll start with your job title that you're in. Councilor Breckenridge?
It's not actually a committee report, but it is something important. I happened to go to the Sir Fraser discussion at the quarry. Speaker Madron and Ted, he's called the meeting. And I was just interested, so I turned out I seemed very talented. But they came coincidentally, it was coincidental. Happy because it was there were twenty thirty residents from the area around who live around quarry.
This longer for twenty minutes.
Which I have a list to send out.
I just want to listen.
What is it?
City Council meeting.
No, no, that was someone else talking.
Just briefly, so I won't hold the meeting. The complaints included inconsiderate dominance truck drivers. For residents' cars and off the narrow dust truck traffic and toxic impacts to health from the first air and water quality, including pollution of harder food. And then questions about damage and what are their actual rights and representative from Mercer Fraser was very agreeable and hopeful to take these complaints back and see what could be done. Not in the city of Trinidad. General community. Thank you, thanks for attending. Councilor West?
I have a brief information from HCO. There's right now they're working on the housing. The housing interests that are throughout Humboldt County. We saw some videos are called creating the Grove, which is from the Arcata House. Those are out there on the HCO website. Didn't have the address or didn't get the address before I came, but if you're interested, you want to HCO, you can find out what they're doing, the Arcata House system is pretty interesting right now. They've managed to start hotel, I believe, together on housing and they are moved sixty people from the streets into the housing. And they're hoping to start seeing, we'll start this arcade as this takes place, which is a big step in the right direction. And they're pretty excited, so they have free videos to show what they've been doing. So if you're interested, you can see that on the HCO website. I'm hoping that maybe down the road I'll get a chance to show those, so you can see what they're doing is interesting. And Caltrans is working on the NBL undercrossing, so if you haven't seen what's going on, they're really making a lot of progress. And you're going to see the things change as they begin to build this, the under underpass, undercrossing in there. So if you can, as you notice what's going on, this is taking place, and you're going to see them in the year probably. Under crossings take place and the trail in place, so they're moving along fast. It's pretty exciting to see what they're doing and they're putting in high officials, what they call thirty feet dug into the ground to support this thing because the mud is where the dirt is so it's not strong enough to support these, this underpassing. So as you see go by, you'll notice some of the big machinery out there should drive these things in and to get the the overpass, or this called an undercrossing, so that you'll see that start taking place. And it's also going to shut down lanes, so it's going to be, but next year you're going to see a lot of slowdowns on the traffic going into Eureka from the side, so be aware. They also are talking about the Antimere's Trail info that should be up. That they're hoping to get that up soon, so that looks like it's going to take place. So a lot of good things going on in terms of trails and what are roads are going to look like, so pay attention.
Start with question, did they say anything about cutting down the eucalyptus trees? Because I noticed they were cutting some of them down.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I thought about that, I forgot to ask about it at the meeting, but I'll try to remember to find out. But it looks like they plan to cut down some, I think they're going to leave the rest up, I'm not positive.
There's a good article in the local about that, about why they did it and what they're doing.
I'll check it out, thank you.
If they're thinking what they've cut is what they're planning to have cut. And the rest that's remaining is what's the remaining. I think that's what it was. They said the northern portion is the one they might cut then. And to keep the southern portion. So once you get into driving south and get to where Schlitt Bauer is, if, so from there drive on is the southern portion, and that's currently intact. From my understanding, at least it will remain for a certain period of time.
That's planned, so hopefully.
So Redwood Region Economic Development, a couple of things they're working on. They continue to explore ways to increase housing in the community, working with lots of different agencies. And so they're also have a very, continue to have a very active loan program for a lot of local businesses. So if you're in Dictator Chocolate, if you're in the the Oric area and want to stay in the Redwoods before going to the park. These are a lot of places where Redwood Region has really brought a lot of support to local businesses to thrive. They also have a microloan program, so I've said this in the past, but really their, their mission is when a small business is not quite a good risk for a bank, they come in and support the business in in keeping afloat or starting fresh, so it's just nice to be, to see all that. And then Humboldt Transit Authority also continues to work on bringing in, what is it, zero carbon transportation, so with hydrogen and solar for their buses. They're also working on a, what's called the Earth Center, which will provide housing, a partnership with the city and the university to provide housing in a transportation hub in Eureka. So some pretty exciting things that will end up being seen by the rest of the state as really leading the way in a lot of these initiatives. So also, I know there's not a ton of folks here, I appreciate your being here. I wish everyone was here because every year we ask for a transportation needs. And it's an annual process where all of the municipalities ask for transportation needs and provide input. Humboldt Transit Authority is struggling to keep drivers, but is also investing in creative ways to provide more options for folks to use transportation. So encourage everyone, maybe if they read the minutes to the meeting, they'll see that we really do want your input. Being on that board, I will take that information to the, to the organization so that we can try to have more service to this part of the county. So we're a small area, but it's still important, so that's what's going on. Oh, and I did have a question for the council. If anyone was able to attend the meeting last week about the interchange that's happening with the rancher area, can can we get a, just a little in, or is it, ah, there we go. I missed that, my bad.
So, so Councilor Breckenridge, myself, Eli, was there? So I think almost everyone was there and Eli has it in his staff report.
I missed, I'm sorry. Yeah. Thank you, that's for me.
Thank you. Yeah, so attending the interchange was the first thing on my list and I was going to say that Eli's going to talk about it in his staff report. So I also attended the League of California Cities Redwood Empire Division meeting last Friday, the eighteenth. And it was kind of fun, we saw a canine demo where they took the, the canines were going after drugs. And they showed, they did a demonstration of that, so that was, that was kind of a fun and exciting way to open the meeting. They did also talk about the, the Redwood Coast Offshore Wind Project, which won't be started in construction until probably twenty thirty. So that one is pretty far out there and there's a lot of stuff in the news about it, so I won't go into detail. They did talk about wildfire impacts on the California insurance market. I think that's something that plus the COAD wildfire meeting, which I attended today at four o'clock. I've seen a lot of comments on kind of local social media. People were concerned about the fact that we have more wildfires in Northern California of close to us, closer to Trinidad. And so I just wanted to reassure everyone that we've spoken with CAL FIRE, we're working with COAD. We're in a, you know, monitoring status, but there is no imminent threat to Trinidad or the greater Trinidad area at this time. But we will be talking about the CERT program a little bit later and how that program can help us in those kinds of situations. So I think that's it for me. And oh, the website is up and running. I want to encourage people to go to the main page of the website and subscribe. Because we definitely have everyone in town signed up. And if we do have some issue, any kind of emergency, we'd love to be able to send everybody a text message if we want to.
Can I ask more quick, the, the announcement gave for the city meeting, was that done through the website list, sir? Or is it still using the old email list?
Still using the old.
I figured just because it just got on board.
Yeah, and the new system that Mayor Kelly was talking about website requires users to go and subscribe to it.
Right.
So until that happens, we're going to continue to use the existing CERT, this CERT.
Okay. I signed up because I was obviously in a meeting with Cheryl, but I imagine.
I made her.
Okay, thank you.
So, but you know, it's, it is really important, we'll do a big push. Keep in mind, everybody see, just remind them to do that because it will be important as we have, you know, important announcements like these.
Yeah.
Okay, separate.
Okay, so I'm going to start off with Phil Guiman, who's here from Coleman Engineering. He's our chief plant operator at the moment. And he's going to talk a little bit about some of the improvements being done there.
Oh, thanks for joining.
Well, Eli, I don't know, I was in town, he said. Is, you guys have any questions?
I think in general, while the councils are kind of reading through and maybe have some questions about this. I think, I think there's been some ongoing questions in the community and on the council just about kind of in general, how, you know, what kind of shape is the plant in? And do you feel like there's a good strategy from a staffing perspective to to, you know, kind of really see the plant, you know, into the future and providing water for the community? Clean water, safe water, that kind of thing. So maybe starting, I guess, with just kind of your general impressions and your experience so far.
Trying to look on our equity strategy right now. While it's being trained to make a little positive field. While C U's done its way through all of the state. Pretty good. They worked at the plant for, I think, a year and a half, a year and a half. We don't work long that, so every, I'm only coming up once a month now. For the week of the month, that's all, once a year, I have to sign. It's a training in how to keep the plants. So this month I came up early. So I'm going to do that, set up that file there. And even we'll finish the, the last weekend. Staffing is like it only work about twenty to thirty hours a week, that's what he's been doing for the last two years, basically, or half. That's what he's comfortable doing. Can't do the distribution side of it anymore, but you guys have a couple of distribution operators. Derek, they just retired on a month ago. And they plan to take his license to get his degree to the distribution. Water operator to fill in for patients there, retirees, quits, whatever. It's kind of your backup. What do you like handed out to you guys is kind of this, when I'm in town for the that's me do all the big projects, so last month, there's, you know, I send the guys, I say these things that you talk to me about are, I talk to them every day. Will you do the tasks that we're going to work on? You know, they said we wanted to talk about in settlers out, some mixing basins, the intakes or gallery. Back flush them, back flush filters, change the out, chemical lines, anything that needs more than two hands on. So we get all the big projects now, I'm in town, all of those.
That's a pretty good list, are there questions and comments?
Yeah, can I, will Lyle and, so I'm looking at the list of eleven things that for the week. Will Lyle and Derek help you with each of these so that they become proficient in them?
Yeah, so anything that I do at the plant, I ask above them to be there every day.
And will, is this a, is, are these things monthly, annual, semi-annual?
All on weekly. Okay, quarterly, so yeah, these are things that are done every, every month.
Okay.
But some are
So variable frequency.
So we're working into maybe for a while, but also to help everybody that we're going to have, okay, here's, here's your weekly tasks. They, they are, they're not all of us. Here's the seven that we do every quarter now, instead of once a year. I always pick the job a lot, you're mixing bases, same. Intakes for the gallery, you want them done. Yeah, they're, they're involved. They can pull off the wall tomorrow, they're going to be good, I just didn't want them to have everything as electrical.
As long as all this stuff is in some kind of schedule, right? I can't track, so I'm sure, yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, I guess that's it.
So regarding the staff reporting, mentioned in it that Leventon was cleaning flow measurements, who was done last Friday. And it was one point one to nine CFS. I can mention the Van Wijk Trail. So the California Coastal Commission will be meeting in Crescent City. And I say in there, Elk Valley Rancheria Casino, but they're actually meeting at the Elk Valley Rancheria's meeting room, which is separate from the casino. It's near their prior casino, they've since opened a new one. So this is on Hamilton Hill Road. And that would be going on the sixth, seventh and eighth. And specifically September sixth, they're planning on addressing the Van Wijk Trail. We had closed the trail, input from our insurance company, this we had talked about reopening the trail, and then we got a reservation from the Euro tribe saying we keep the trail closed. And then there was an appeal to the Coastal Commission. You know, to the Coastal Commission, so we heard September sixth. We also had our insurance company this morning. Representatives was to cite the current condition of it. And he's going to be preparing a short report that can be shared with the city council, the city in the Coastal Commission. He had also appeared in a meeting that we had on a staff level. That our planner and the insurance company, along with the Coastal Commission. Discuss the condition of the trail. So that meeting will be on the sixth. Then the next thing I mentioned was the proposed Trinidad interchange and road improvements. This address was mentioned last week. It was the public meeting. And it was held the Trinidad Rancheria. It was a good turnout. Public, a lot of the people who attended were residents from either Seamy Drive or West Haven. Other residents from the city and some of, some of the council members. So the presentation was made to the public. Initially, they were talking about just doing the presentation to discuss potential interchange improvements. Those two improvements, originally they started with eight designs, they narrowed it down to two designs. One of them is called three D and one is called five C. The three D one would add an additional interchange that would be one point two miles south of the current Trinidad interchange. It would be a dog bone diamond shaped design. A small bridge and an auxiliary rails for entrance and exit off of the freeway. In order for people to slow down and pick up speed and if you're entering or exiting the interchange. I see when not put in a new interchange on the one rather than improve the existing Trinidad interchange. By adding the roundabout that being its seating. The improvements to scenic would also add lanes for pedestrians and bicyclists as well as putting in some retaining walls along scenic. The scenic has had some issues. Also, in five C, there would be, instead of the interchange added, there would be a pedestrian bicycle bridge that would go across one on one to connect the two sides of the Trinidad Rancheria. Since once the one on one split up, Trinidad Rancheria. It was also mentioned previously that day before the public meeting in the evening. On a staff level, we had a meeting, Josh Wolf from GHD, Trevor Parker from SHM and myself had attended that meeting with the two representatives from Q K four, which are the ones who are doing the design. Also representatives from the Rancheria and from Caltrans who were on. So at that point, they did mention that they would be interested in doing a presentation at a future city council. So we can make that arrangement. And this way you can see the visuals, the visuals were very well in this way, more people in our public, in our city could see it all. Are there any questions regarding that?
If I may add, I thought I remembered them saying that the meeting we met to was just to share the designs. But there would be an actual public meeting upcoming when people could participate in this.
Exactly, yeah, so, so that was the plan. They ended up, at least at this meeting, at the end of it, they allowed questions. And, and, and there was a very good, you know, interaction between the Rancheria and the residents that were in West Haven and scenic. And, and it was, it seemed productive, so I was impressed with that. But yes, there will be another meeting that they will hold where they will be talking and giving the opportunity for questions and answers. The other thing I mentioned was the Chamber mixer at the Beachcomber, which will be tomorrow at five thirty. Pizza will be purchased by the Chamber and it's coming from the Open Heart, which is the pizza that's, that's over here right by the Beachcomber. And then the Beachcomber is going to be supplying beer and wine. And then Chamber Uh, and then, uh, Chamber members will get two tickets. Drinks and other people are encouraged to become Chamber members. And I, I think they're gonna do a ribbon cutting for the Beachcomber, they talked about it, but I didn't get the final word. But that's the thought, since there is, we won't issue there. The other thing I did want to mention is I got an email from. PG and E. Talking about, uh, an issue that's there to Jap's heart, uh, Jack title. And that is the underground. So we, uh, currently have a very minimal amount of money available in the account. Which is two thousand one hundred and forty-six dollars. However, what they said is, uh, they. Are ending the program and they're gonna be distributing the money to different, uh, underserved communities. And, and I told them, I says, you know, we are planning some projects in the future. Their position was, it's gonna cost millions, you know, make sure that the council realizes that. This is only two thousand, I says, whatever we do, the two thousand can go towards there. So they said that what we can do is, uh, prepare a resolution, have the council pass the resolution. They can't guarantee anything because it goes through, uh, Public Utilities Commission also. Uh, but either way, we're gonna try and save that two thousand dollars. And then we'll have a, a resolution coming up for the council, so I just wanted you to be aware of it. And that's it, so I'll entertain any questions, comments.
Any questions by the council for Eli? Okay, I, I'll just make a brief comment that, and I'll talk about this in future agenda items. I, I didn't have a ton of questions for, uh, Coleman, specifically for Phil. But, um, I do, I will suggest that we go deep on kind of our overall strategy for managing water. In a future meeting, so I just didn't feel like necessarily he was the right person to sort of. Answer my more, you know, strategic question versus the. The execution side, so anyway, I just want to mention that.
And certainly we want to have impressed to.
Yes, for that.
Uh, and part of the reason is, is of course, we've talked about it. Uh, the number of group that's happened to the water plant, and we want to continue that trend, you know, we don't want to lose ground from. Uh, what we've invested, because we had invested a decent amount of money, but we have made some nice groupings and keep them all.
We get to put those into context so that we can, you know, people can, it, it gets technical really fast. So, you know, to the extent that we can put it in context for an overall strategy, I think that will be, be good. Um, all right, so let me open up to public comments, are there any public comments regarding the staff report? Please.
Hello, Larry Goldberg, I live in rural Trinidad, so I don't live in urban Trinidad. Uh, but I wanted to just mention about the interchange project, uh, that, that came up. Uh, I attended that meeting and one thing that was very clear to me is this is gonna be a very expensive project. And the only way it can be completed, whichever mode they take, is everyone has to work together. Uh, the big issue that I see is Seating Drive. Seating is gonna be an extremely expensive project and the county will never be able to fund it. So given that, I really think that a project that the Rancheria is proposing might be the only way. That Seating gets addressed in our lifetime. And, uh, from talking to engineers, I, I get the sense it's gonna be extremely expensive, so as a result. Um, the only ones, the only way this will work is if the county, the city, the Rancheria, and the state. All get together, because, uh, I think with lobbying, you can get some of this money. But it's gonna take a lot of money to do the project, and we all have to be on the same page. And one thing that I saw at the meeting is that there's a lot of, I would just say, uh, separate, um, contingencies that were there. And there are people on South Seating that wants, want their area done. And that's gonna be even more expensive. So the fact is that everyone has to come together, and I would encourage the council to work closely with the Rancheria. This is one area where the Rancheria, the tribe, and the council can form a unified bond. And I think this would be a great opportunity for cooperation. So, uh, I support the project, I understand it takes over twenty years to get to this point. I hope it doesn't take another twenty years to get it done. But I do think it's a well thought out project and well worth, uh, everyone kind of pulling together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other public comments regarding the staff report? Thank you very much, Eli, and, uh, with that, we will go ahead and move on to the consent agenda, or I'm sorry, uh, items from before. So at this time, it was the time and speak on items not on tonight's agenda, uh, for up to three minutes or, or so. Um, yes, I see a hand raised, so, uh, Ms. Levine.
Levine, um, in looking over the packet, this junk and what it mean, a very odd, uh. Two paragraphs that actually made me laugh, so I'm gonna just give you, we'll open it for you. Oh, what was? It's, uh, under the contract with the Animal Control Services on page four, and it's on page eighty-eight of the packet. Number seventeen. I am not making this up. Trinidad is not knowingly engaged in the research, development, production, or testing of nuclear warheads. Or nuclear weapon systems. The city agrees to notify the county immediately if it becomes a nuclear weapons provider. How much time the county will immediately terminate the agreement to comply with Humboldt County's nuclear pre-orders. Okay, on, on to more.
Thank you for that.
Down to earth. Um. Made it to Resolution twenty twenty-one oh two, um, the Water Advisory Committee. Um. So the purposes and objectives were to analyze potential options of water sources. And provide a public forum to address and discuss water concerns. I think it's really important to. Time and energy into accomplishing the purposes and objectives of the Water Advisory, um, Committee. Before it potentially comes up for review. Um, the council asked, uh, in ordinance or amendment, what do you mean, but. Um, that it's going to be come, come up for review in three to five years, that was almost two years ago. So now it's potentially coming up to review in one to three years. I think. We need to do a very careful financial analysis comparing the ongoing costs of the Leffinholz plant. Compared to getting, uh, portable water delivered and for Humboldt Bay. Careful analysis of the firefighting capability of the Leffinholz plant compared to water for Humboldt Bay. And we need to address the concerns of having a more substantial water source. Leading to undesirable development, not filling some development. And there's other things that hopefully the Water Advisory Council will actively take on. They have not been leaving, um, on a regular basis. And possibly, um, like to evaluate adding some people to the Water Advisory Council.
Thank you, thank you, Paula, and I, I will apologize for not getting my lap set up as. The Water Advisory Committee said this is rapidly running late, I've had some trouble getting, um, you know, just kind of getting a forum. Uh, on date, but I added it to my to-do list for tomorrow and I will get that set up, so. Thank you for reminding me. Other public comments?
Mike Morgan, five sixteen words. This issue for me came up, but I wanted to appeal a, a judicial decision to the council. And I worked with David a couple times in a few months and tried to sort it out. But that's special. That's just in a letter, I'm gonna do this. We got to the point where they're gonna, we talked to Trevor, and I spoke with Mayor about this a little bit too. They said, you know, you should really have this little section on our website, and you're gonna say, you guys find. That has the forms and here's what you do, here's, it's in layman's terms, so this legal stuff. Yeah, they ask me about the state of law, something very simple to do. Well, then it got complicated. Then started thinking, well, if we're doing this, the plan, it seems to be straightforward in the conversation, so. And if they're on a straight, we're fine. I'd also like to see if we're all, and resolutions and any actions the council takes. So we can maybe avoid some of the theatrical elements against, into lawsuits. So I submitted each other, I mean, public comment, I just want to talk a little bit about it. So that's motivation behind this, is there? If, if I had known about the ones at the time, we had received them, I'd try to review it. There's a couple of different options that could happen, call for a public carry on it before we need to. Or system, you know, legal system involved, and I was just looking for some way, and this is required, and then. More information, there are legal, there's legal buffers in between just going to. I don't know, let's see if you guys pass, and maybe we need. So I've talked to Cheryl about it, I'm gonna work on a little bit more, and I'll answer it in the next session. But that's my, to try to provide a buffer before we just, everything's kind of out of control, and anybody else else has to get through it.
Thanks. Thank you. Other public comments? All right, with that then, uh, thank you everyone, and we'll, we'll move on then to tonight's consent agenda. So let me start, I guess, first with the council, are there any questions or comments? Changes that you want to make sure the consent agenda? Okay, I see none, uh, what about, uh, members of the public? Is there, is there anyone who would like to make a change to the recommended change to the consent agenda? Hey, there are no hands going, so back to the council. Their motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, I'll send them.
All right, all this in favor?
Aye.
So the consent agenda is approved. And we'll then move on to our, uh, reordered agenda, so the first item tonight would be the discussion decision regarding our contract. With Humboldt County Sheriff's Office to provide animal control services to the city of Trinidad.
Hello. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Oliver Ham, and I am the Animal Control and Facilities Manager. So I am the direct supervisor for the county Animal Control Officers and Animal Shelter in McKennaville. And I'm here to answer any questions you guys might have regarding what potential services the county would be providing with this contract.
Uh, do you, have the council have questions off the top of your head? Okay, I have a quick one, um, which is if, um, we complete this contract. And does it mean that Animal Control will do sort of proactive patrols through Trinidad? Or is it just a response when called?
More often than not, my Animal Control Officers are, uh, responding to calls for service that are received. But if they're in the area, they will do control checks and that kind of stuff. Um, you have to keep in mind that there are four. Animal Control Officers for the county, and that means that they are going from Shelter Cove to Willow Creek to. Hillsville, you know, up to Oregon, so they're all over the place. Uh, the. It was just recently that we received our fourth Animal Control Officer to fulfill that position. And that's why, uh, let Captain Quinell know that I didn't see. Having a co- a full-time contract with the city to be that impactful as far as like number of calls for service and our ability to respond to them. Uh, our Animal Control staff seven days a week excluding holidays. Um, and, you know, sometimes when, uh, someone's on vacation or they're out sick. That's typically on the weekends that I don't have, uh, an Animal Control Officer if someone's out. Uh, because generally during the week, I have, uh, more than one working. Uh, so their response times will depend on where they happen to be at, at the time that call is received. You know, if I only have one working in the field that day, and they are currently in Shelter Cove, it's gonna be a pullout. Uh, but if they're down at the shelter, they'll, you know, be able to respond pretty quickly. Many things are handled by phone, it really depends on what the situation is. But if it's a loose dog, especially if it's an aggressive dog, uh, I definitely would respond if Animal Control was not available.
Okay, so that, yeah, that was gonna be the second part of my question was whether the, the law enforcement would respond, and it sounds like the answer is yes, if you're not available.
If we're not available, and if, you know, if they're able as well, you know, there's staffing issues with all throughout the Sheriff's Department. So if they're able to, they'll respond, yes.
And we, you know, we have had a couple of dog attacks, and we made it national news, and so. Um, and we've had, you know, citizens, um, injured, um, pretty seriously by dog attacks, and so. I guess one, you know, thought I had was, is there something proactively, like from the Animal Control perspective, is there like awareness campaigns? Or, you know, is there a public sort of education that we should be doing to help people kind of mitigate those kinds of situations or?
Well, you have, um, there's three in particular that I, that pop in my head as specific incidences that, that I know of. That were big. Uh, the one with the poodles. I don't know, um, that could have been handled probably, um. Or mitigated by hearing that this guy was coming and letting his poodles run loose. And having Animal Control respond and warn him or even cite him about having them run loose. The incident, uh, with the dog versus dog attack that resulted in biting as well. That one, that dog had never been heard of prior to that incident, and so. Uh, she had been kept secure, there hadn't been any complaints that I was aware of. Uh, so that was an accident by the owner. Um, and not securing his door and, and falling asleep on his couch when the dog got out, and he didn't know she was out, et cetera, et cetera, it's the story I was getting. And then, trying to remember the third one. But is this something similar to where the, it was the dog accidentally got out, it wasn't a routine, ongoing type of problem? So, um, the, the incidents that you're going to, having, uh. More regular enforcement would help with is the off-leash. I was specifically got, you know, this person wants their dog off-leash in the city of Trinidad, that's not allowed. Um, and, and citing those people for doing so. There had the dog, another dog fight, um, where the dog, it was a bulldog versus a husky, I think it was. And, uh, that one was because, and the own, both owners were present. So that was happened because the dog wasn't leash lengthed, it was supposed to be. That is one in particular that would hopefully be mitigated. If, um, there was some sort of enforcement to the leash law, because currently, it's my understanding, there's not really. Anything that you guys are able to do, um, to enforce leashing your dog.
Yeah, yeah, I think you summarized it really well, yeah.
The ones where, uh, the dog got loose, was aggressive and, uh, attacked another dog and then bit the finger off of Ted P's.
Yeah.
Um, that dog was known to be aggressive, it's just that reports had never reached City Hall. So.
Nor the Sheriff's Office, so, so, you know, if she was in her backyard barking her head off. Growling and, you know, scaring everybody that walked faster, there is nothing I can do about that, that she's completely legal as long as she's kept secure.
No, she was out of the property and, uh, the neighbors had, you know, after the event, the neighbors said, yeah, we were always scared, we kept away.
Yeah.
But nobody reported anything because there hadn't been an incident.
Right, so, but, you know, so. Uh, and I talked a little bit with. Eli about this, about potentially even changing your guys' animal control ordinances, so that, uh. They're more similar to what the county ordinances are, and we're looking at changing. they're more similar to what the county ordinances are, and we're looking at changing ours as well to because currently, right now, um, for a potentially dangerous dog, for instance, um, in our county ordinance, which mirrors the state law, it says that there has to be two attacks on another animal. So, uh, within a thirty-six month period, we're looking at changing that, so that if, it's one thing if a dog got loose and it bit and it was just a couple of punctures versus it killed the neighbor's cat, or it killed the little dog. Um, there was a Great Dane incident that happened down at the beach, uh, year or two ago, where this Great Dane bit a chihuahua and had killed it. With everybody present, and the Great Dane was leashed. And, uh, that particular incident, there wasn't really any action animal control could take against the Great Dane because it was, it was only one incident. So we're looking at changing that to make it a little bit more restrictive. Um, and, uh, give us a little bit more authority to address those issues like that. Um, I think having the, uh, the community and the citizens of Trinidad know that if they call animal control, they're not going to be told, call City Hall, you know, all that kind of stuff. That they call animal control through the sheriff's office and put in a call complaining that this is going on, and that doesn't have to mean that they want animal control to do anything. They just want to tell us that this is happening in case something happens. Then that gives us a little bit more information, uh, so that we're able to address, uh, chronic dog problems, uh, specific areas, like, you know, I know that the state beach is a a chronic issue, unfortunately, that would not fall within our jurisdiction because state parks. Uh, but if my animal control officers are in the area, they see a loose dog, they'll catch it or try to and address the issue.
If I'm not mistaken, you said that the county follows the state anyway. So, right, we talk about that, how, you know, dog walking in this area, no one really knows when their city, county, state, you know what I mean? So it's, I, I really appreciate the fact that we're all kind of aligning with the same. At least we're headed in that direction, that we're all aligning with the same rules.
Yeah.
So that it's less confusing for folks, uh, about what the rules are wherever they are.
Yeah.
It's all the same, there's nothing to memorize other than what the rules.
Right, and ours would just, uh, if we make these changes that we've been talking about making, which will have to go through its whole process.
Yeah.
Um, if we make these changes, then, uh, it's too bad for the gap to citizens, most people, most dog owners don't know that it takes two incidents with your dog, uh, attacking another animal before we are able to move to a hearing. Uh, it only takes one bite, so that I, you know, so it does, it, one, a single bite can result in hearing on that dog, depending on circumstances, um, that always comes into play, determining whether or not we move forward to a hearing or not, and whether or not the, um, the victim is willing to come forward as well, because if I don't have firsthand victim report to, in that hearing, then I don't have um, you know, my animal control officers didn't see it, so all they have is what the person told them, and so that, it, it makes it more difficult if the, the victim doesn't want to do anything.
Does that matter if they have a license or their proper shots and vaccinations?
Those things are addressed if there's an incident, but, um, if I don't go to a hearing just because you don't have a license. Um, licensing fees increase, if they do, if we do end up declaring their dog as dangerous or vicious, we charge them twice as much for their licensing fees. Uh, I don't know exactly what your guys' system is for licensing, I think it's pretty uh, simple, uh, and having something like that would be too difficult. And I don't even really know off the top of my head what population of Trinidad is, or, you know, if you, you know, what your animal population is, but I don't imagine it's.
Did you say that the dogs declared vicious or aggressive? Double their licensing?
Yes.
That's, that's the result?
That's not the only result, it's just, it's part of it. Um, you know, depending on what's, uh, if it's dangerous, there's restrictions on how they keep their dog. It must be kept in a kennel in the house or on a leash at all times, not allowed to run loose in the backyard. Um, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and then if it's declared vicious, uh, it's those things, but it can't go for walks anymore. It can't, if it does leave the property, it needs to be muzzled, and it can only go like to the back, um, and back. It, it's not allowed to be out in public. Uh, and that it be kept secure at all times, not allowed to ride open bed in a pickup truck, there's a few different things, it's all listed out. Um, I did not bring a copy of our county ordinances with me, but those are available online. Uh, and it, like I said, it does mirror the state good night code.
So, um, I was gonna ask regarding our ordinance, which deals with the leash law and also deals with the police, uh, or, you know, party continuously, so. So if that differs from county's ordinance, would you be able to enforce those provisions of ours?
Yeah, you know, I talked about not, you know, trying to align our ordinances, so that my animal control officers don't have to learn a whole new set of rules. But the primarily in regards to vicious and dangerous, the barking and the leash law, that's easy, they, you know, they just would have a, a cheat sheet basically that tells them what the, uh, say, uh, ordinance number is for citation purposes. And, uh, if your barking ordinance is better than ours, then it probably is, because ours is very, uh, then they would introduce that as well.
All right, are there any, uh, sorry, any other things for the council? Okay, are there any public, uh, questions or comments for animal control? Okay, I guess not, so you've been thorough, thank you very much, that's really helpful.
You're welcome, and the whole nuclear free thing that's in every single contract the county has, so it's just, it's funny, but it's, you know.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much, thanks for coming.
All right, so I think at this point, like Eli, we're looking for, uh, the council to weigh in on whether or not to approve the agreement.
Exactly.
The, uh,
I missed something.
So, so we are, uh, at this point deciding whether or not to approve the contract with animal control. So I'm looking for counselors to either.
I, I propose that we do.
Okay. Okay. All right, so we have a first and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so the animal control contract passes unanimously. Thank you, Eli, for, um, bringing in animal control, getting your contract in the works, because this has been kind of a serious issue in town for the last six months. All right, so now we are ready to move on to our second item, which was our third, which is the discussion and decision regarding the CERT program of participation, and I guess I'll kick this one off. Uh, you may all recall that we had a presentation back in June from, and this is, CERT is the Community Emergency Response Team. And it's sponsored by FEMA, uh, for those in the room, I have some show and tell about some of the swag that you get as a volunteer for CERT. I took the training in May, it was really, really beneficial. Um, we do have a decision whether or not to do a Trinidad-sponsored team. Um, we think that the cost is going to be about forty-one hundred dollars, and I outlined it in the packet. Um, I was speaking with Linda earlier today, and we think maybe we can knock off five hundred dollars of that cost, uh, because she's been able to find some, you know, kits and, you know, different materials from other trainings that weren't used, and they may be able to kind of move those forward. Plus, as I mentioned before, um, I think Larry mentioned that the McKinleyville CERT will also be loading us a trailer, so we'll need to pay for storage for that. But, uh, in any case, we've gone through the whole, you know, kind of presentation last time, so the purpose of tonight's discussion was just to decide if we want to have a Trinidad-sponsored team. So I'll start with the council to see if you have any questions, and I have Larry and Linda here to answer.
And I can add one bit of information. So this morning, when our representative from the insurance company, Sarah was here, I asked him specifically what, uh, money would be available through our insurance company for this, uh, program. And he gave the example, for instance, of Burndale, apparently they have a really good program that's working there, and Sarah also covers, uh, Burndale. Uh, but, uh, there is a fund that's available for emergency situations, which is thirty-five hundred dollars. So he said that it could be applied to this as they've done.
Excellent. So that might make it a little bit easier to say, huh?
So that the, uh, what's left, a thousand plus, would be all that the ci- city would have to pay in order to have this trained?
Well, if you subtract the five hundred, there's only a hundred left.
Yeah.
Plus, uh, the ongoing, uh, what is, how much was it for the storage? Like a couple, oh, and then, okay, and that's, that's the annual amount.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because that'll keep on going after, we, we just use the thirty-five hundred as one time. You know, purchasing and stuff.
Do end up having some incremental possible snacks and different things like that for volunteers. You know, maybe, maybe to be safe, we say that we'll, um, we'll need the, so with forty-one hundred total, we know we can find at least a couple hundred dollars worth of materials, right, Linda, so, um, so that would bring it down to oh, thirty-nine hundred minus thirty-five hundred, so you know, ma- at the max, four hundred, a hundred to four.
No matter how many people decide to get certified.
Yeah, well, we have a, a max, I think, capacity was twenty, thirty, thirty, so up to thirty volunteers. If we got that many, we'd probably be pretty lucky. Uh, but we would, if we had space, we could offer up some space to other folks as well, like the Rantry or the Urock Pride, because they have, um, organizations as well. They call theirs TUR, so tribal emergency response team. All right, I'll, uh, let me go to public comments, are there any public comments or questions about this in reference?
Oh, oh, Aaron, uh, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, yeah, we'll start with the gentleman. My name's Joe, and I live just around town, Anderson, like. And I've been in a certain area before in the Bay Area, so I'm certainly in favor of it. And I think I'm even more emphatically in favor of it, given the recent events on Maui. And, you know, while the, the climate and the situation is really quite different, one of the things I, I, two of the things I'm concerned about is on how people had a hard time evacuating. Which could apply to, to our city here. And, and the other was the, the complete shutdown of communications, so cell phone, power towers went out, and that, you know, landlines, the power went out, so a lot of people didn't get, um, notified. So I, I think that's probably a separate issue that Trinidad might want to look at, um, either, you know, making connections with ham radio operators is a possibility. Or I just, I just became aware of call genesis protect, talks about evacuation jobs. Um, but I, I would certainly, um, be in favor, because it might be that, that if something was coming, that you could use to serve people, not only to, to, to help with, say, earthquakes, but also to help people guide people to, say, the skate roads or other kinds of tasks that would be important if, if it was wildfire as well as earthquake or other disasters. So I, I just would speak in favor of those, with those things in mind, learn from the people's butchered trenches.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Larry, did you have something else?
Uh, I wanted to, uh, speak, uh, for a moment about a couple of things, this trailer that we refer to is a really valuable piece of equipment for the city. This is a twenty-foot, uh, trailer that's completely stocked with emergency supplies. The value of the trailer and the supplies is probably fifteen to ten thousand dollars. And it will be, I believe, transferred to the city if they form a team. So you're gaining an asset in process. Uh, this trailer can be, uh, set up, I hope to set up at Murphy's parking lot to do some promotion for the uh, for forming a team here, but, uh, this, uh, trailer is a really excellent uh, uh, piece of emergency equipment for the future, so that's, uh, one thing I wanted to mention. The second thing is, um, as the last speaker, uh, mentions, with what has just happened in Maui, but more recently, what's going on right now up in Crest City. Um, we should expect the day will come and we're going to have some serious wildfire issues. And one thing I found interesting is I was at the, uh, Trinidad, I mean, the West Haven, uh, fundraiser with Blackberry Festival, and I saw the captain of the, uh, West Haven, uh, fire uh, team, and he said, if you had a CERT team, we could work on training together and work together because they have trouble staffing their fire team, and they could use some additional help for administrative help, or, uh, doing things that are not directly in firefighting, but definitely work, uh, with them on emergency situations. So that is an added benefit that I think West Haven Volker Fire Department would be interested in partnering with a team. So, one solution.
Excellent, thank you for adding, and I, I was giving kind of the Reader's Digest page, and so I appreciate you, uh, elaborating on the trailer.
Um, Aaron, how can we, like, put it, right? His public comment, since he couldn't be here, if I may read it, this is for Aaron. Um, as a city resident and volunteer and career-first responder, this is a great program, will greatly enhance the resiliency of our community, both of then-city limits as well as the greater area. My opinion, the team north of McKinleyville can only be successful if it casts a wide net for membership and response area. We struggle to have members of TVFD, so clearly we don't have the guts to add something like this on our own, please vote yes to invest in our community, we need to see the benefits beyond city limits on this one. It's on to say, I have met with Larry once. Uh, since this was our last on your agenda, and we began the process of brainstorming some paths forward. And I look forward to continuing to work within the city's fore. There is no other entity capable of supporting this type of team that I can think of. And future costs can be addressed potentially through grant funding as well as fundraising activities.
Thank you. All right, I think, yeah, I'm worried, help us back with the council, are there any?
Just one question, how many people are you already, are you on board in terms of training from this area?
You know, that's a good question, Larry, do you know how many are, uh, already trained, I mean, there's me and you and.
There's half a dozen. Uh, but we don't know who all of them are, so.
Yeah, I think we worded. And we did get a, I got an email from a local resident who, to, to Jeff's point, was, um, a ham radio operator, and she's very interested, so I think we may, we may be able to get it.
The other part of this, right now, we're talking about Trinidad itself, or we're talking about the frontier area, when we talk about this program as tonight that we're talking about, is it?
So greater Trinidad area, I think we're going to need to cast a wider net to get, and, and you know, last winter, when we had the power outages and the challenges that we had, it really showed that it affects not just, that the city of Trinidad is affected, but also that that, you know, community around us, so I think we'd have to cast a better. That would be my thought, but it really is a council that says it itself.
I definitely think we should go for it.
I think it's a wise investment in the city, like you said, to, again, go with this greater Trinidad watershed approach kind of thing, and say, you know, the folks who benefited from being able to come to Town Hall, you know, range from Sumag State Park down to Little River, so that, that ought to be the net that we cast. If, especially if McKinleyville already has a CERT team, then we're it as far as north of Little River, so we gotta, we gotta lean into that.
I agree.
And it's, I think it's an incredibly wise use of, of our resources.
Excellent, all right, is there a motion?
I would move that we approve, um, the budget and, and effort towards developing a CERT team in Trinidad.
Open it up to a wider area, covering the, the area from Sumag down to Little River, I'm just gonna say, that's sort of our service area, and I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Right, excellent, passing unanimously, and I'd like to give Larry and Linda very much for being here and supporting this and providing all the information and.
There's one thing I might ask, and I think a council member should be a liaison.
Okay.
I think that you should appoint one who was a liaison to work with the CERT team.
Okay, and I'd be happy to do that for now as a, as a certified CERT member, and then we may pass the baton over time as if other counselors become.
Oh, and the training is on, on November third to fifth here at City Hall.
Okay, training November third to the fifth at City Hall, and I'll get something out on the website on that too.
And I believe you said you were gonna try to garner some interest by coming up to Murphy's parking lot.
Right, I'd like to. So, uh, opportunities with the trailer at the park.
Okay, and I'll be happy to help with that, and we may have other counselors who are interested as well.
Great, thank you very much.
All right, well, thank you. All right, well, thank you. I know Linda said this is, you know, ten to twelve years and coming. So thank you for sticking with us and.
Lots of individuals have trained, but then to track them down or get them on a team.
Yeah, yeah.
Lightning fast for Trinidad. At least in the pattern cells in the back, we're really picking up steam here.
All right, thank you.
Um, I brought a little bit of information for the city to get to each of you.
Thanks.
All right, so, uh, we are, uh, moving rapidly, but not too rapidly because this is traffic calling. To item number three, uh, which is a discussion decision regarding traffic calling measures for U Street, Ocean Avenue and Underwood Drive.
Yeah, I thought we decided the tables.
Yeah, it's a word that we're getting covered in. I wasn't sure.
Well, I mean, I'll, I'll just talk a little bit about it now and then we'll address it again in October. Uh, so, um, Dave and, uh, Josh and I had talked about, uh. Having Josh present today, but he said that, uh, apparently he was thinking that our August meetings are going to be the. So, uh, he's not available now, but he will be available in October. But in lieu of that, he did provide us this information. Uh, Michelle will help address some of the issues that were discussed. He also, uh, has given the cost of each and, uh. It, it's important that, uh, whatever we decide to do, that we start like a tribal pilot project. Uh, probably on one of the streets, uh, possibly either. And as a result, uh, see what kind of input you receive and then it would be some, uh. They supposed to like sign. This is out there. The other part could be helpful to reach out even before we put the pilot out. On that particular individual street that we, they choose to let the residents know. So, uh, you know, if there is an uproar against it, then, uh, we may want to check and try it in a different street. Hey, what other questions?
Well, Josh puts his staff, he has a staff recommendation in the package, which were pretty clear. Uh, and he felt that. Those recommendations, he was confident in the development, I think. Um, I, I, I think it, one of the suggestions that I threw in there was the public notification process because. Every time I've seen these around the county, especially in West Haven, my neighborhood, um, County Public Works Department. Puts up barricades with big notices on that say, you know, to everybody that's passing and traveling through that roadway that. You know, speed bumps or whatever, traffic calming measures for this street will be discussed at a future meeting. You know, at this place, such and such time, because it's important to understand that, you know, and, and I don't want to, I don't want to, you know. Go in different direction of this conversation, but streets are paid for by the general public, not by the people that live in front of them. And, and changes to those streets, I think it's reasonable to, to expect or to deliver that message to everyone that travels those streets. Not just, you know, hearing from a couple of homeowners and saying, yeah, let's do it because it's going to affect a lot of people. So just giving people that notice, Josh is taking, uh, in his recommendations to the next level, and he's saying. Go ahead and put in the speed bumps. Don't just notice them, but put it in. And then put barricades out that say, you know, with flags on them and say, hey, see the trial bunks? That are going in for a period of sixty to ninety days. Uh, and, and at such and such time and date, there will be another public hearing to discuss any feedback we may have received. Or give you an opportunity to come because people might not have followed the meetings. They may not have realized it's going to happen. We may discover things in this process that we never knew about people's travel. So this will give an opportunity to do that. And Josh is basically saying that he also told Eli and I that he wasn't going to be able to make it, uh, regret it. Um, but he put the recommendations out there so we could actually make some move in that direction. As opposed to just paying. So it's up to the council tonight how, how you wish to proceed. And I think he even has a vendor. Uh, listed perhaps in the recommendation or where the speed, uh, yeah, Traffic Logix. He went that far and says, I support these pumps. He didn't necessarily like the Amazon. Speed pumps or whatever the, the Aaron, he, he wasn't fully supportive of the ones that Aaron recommended. Um, so, so I'd like to look, our staff would like to look at that, what can his apps, people actually back this week. Um, so we could get more input from him, but when we prepare this staff report, the, uh. So you have some options to move forward, you know, so it's not like we're just kicking the tires on this. We're, we're potentially moving.
If it's a rentals that we can get or we buy, get, buy after you do this.
I think they're, they're, when you purchase, from what I understand.
If you buy them and you get, you, you decide to pull them out, what happens to?
We sell them to Blue Link. I don't know.
Does she answer?
Well, I, I agree that, you know, as much as we, we try, we've had two city meetings. With agendas and not a lot of input. I, and I, it says here, ocean or view. I think, to be honest, my first reaction is ocean and view, so that we're not just pushing everyone to the other street. Because that's what I would do. I mean, that just makes sense. If you don't want to go over a bump, you just go to the other street. And I think that would be a more accurate assessment of, of what people feel about it because there won't be an option.
Yeah, I agree. I think they get doing it on both streets. And I, I like the idea. I mean, the fact that it isn't necessarily permanent. Like if we decided to opt for the pilot, then people do have a chance to try it out. And maybe there's some signage and you can get feedback. It's, that's pretty different than, you know, saying, oh, we're just going to go ahead and put in permanent. So whatever.
So if we buy it, uh, we can keep it permanent, like it's not a replaceable item.
You can do one or you have a price rate. You can say, yeah, we can either say, let's go with the rubber ones, which are temporary. Or we could go full on and say, let's go ahead and put the asphalt ones in.
And I believe there's a life expectancy of these rubberized ones. And if we want to save, now, of course. If we spend whatever, ten thousand dollars and then have to put in the permanent ones, we haven't saved any money.
Yeah.
But if the life expectancy, I believe it was five to seven year. It's not bad investment, but if, if it works in our favor, then perhaps we'll find a permanent solution after that period.
Firehole pilot.
So, uh, so one of the thoughts that was mentioned that by Dave, uh, would be to do what they do in the county. Which would be to put up signage first. And then I think, then the second step would be, uh, you know, and then we could have a public hearing. Uh, and then put in the speed bumps and then get input from the public after that.
Now, ha- haven't we had several meetings about this already?
Well, the, the main thing would be to basically like send every resident. Uh, you know, especially on view and ocean. Let them go or just to signage on those two streets. Then we could probably get more input. This people generally, some people, you know, would show up to a meeting. Other people might not even know what's being considered. When we talk about, uh, in, in the agenda, some people just read the agenda. And if the description doesn't really say enough for them, then they might not realize that it's really. We just want to be on the safe side so that, you know, we're, we're helping the public rather than. Getting a bunch of complaints, why'd you do this? I didn't hear about it. You know, you should let me know. Anyway, that, those are just the positives.
It, it's also true, I think, that the more you, you put up signs saying, well, what do you think? What do you think? It's like, you should be thinking something negative. You just haven't.
The, the, the way it's done in the county is, is not necessarily, but do you think it's more like a notification that this will be coming? And, and then there's a public hearing so that if people feel like they want to say something, they can.
I only thought about that because I, it was, and we don't, we haven't really been doing that for anything now. So like, we're going to do the crosswalks and we just, you know, we discuss it at the city council and we make the decision and then they go in. And so this would be almost kind of like going that extra mile for one project and not for other projects. And so the logic there could be because it's only affecting two streets potentially. Although it really affects anybody in town that uses Ocean and View. I guess, I guess, I kind of feel like we've talked about it at the city council and because it's temporary. That it gives people a chance to get feedback, you know, that we do it as a pilot for sixteen to ninety days and we let them get feedback. And that way we're not holding out to, to get, but that looks just like.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at it from the standpoint of, you know, spending, uh, let's say for the two streets, it's going to be between ten and twelve thousand.
That's true.
Uh, so, uh, what we do know, like, you know, when you put in a crosswalk. Uh, other than putting flashing things, you know, but if you just put it across what, generally speaking, it's not that impactful. Uh, versus, uh, some of the input we've gotten on speed humps, uh, is that if you're living close to it, it could be a noise issue. When vehicles hit them, uh, you know, so we just want to make sure that, uh, we, uh, basically. Try to maximize the positives and minimize and make the negatives in a way. So anyway, that's just a thought. Either way, I could, I could know either way, but I just want to make sure that we're thinking both sides.
Okay. Other comments before I open to public comments?
Just to reiterate what I think the point that, that Gabe makes is worthy of, of us, you know, we're talking about spending city money. Which comes from all residents, so all residents need to pay anyways, right? Whether or not residents choose to go down to view or ocean is not as important as the fact that we are, the city are. Uh, trying to slow the traffic on two of our streets. And so we all need to have input on that. So, and also the school, right? If we're going to, if we're going to push people off the two streets. That get you out of town and it negatively impacts the school, we need to be aware of that too. So the school needs to have this. You know, the survey as well so that they're not seeing an uptick in traffic on, on. Pretty good. Couldn't remember which one, but there's so many streets in Trinidad, but, um, just, I just want to make sure that we're, that we're getting everybody's input.
All right, well, let me, uh, open the public comments and then I'll bring it back to the council for further discussion. Are there any public comments about the? Uh, traffic calming, uh, Ocean of View?
This night of an ocean happening, so. I do appreciate the thoughtfulness of the conversation. And I think a small test of change is the right thing to do. If people use Ocean Avenue as their travel pattern, uh, speed bump probably isn't going to change. So. I think it's really good to live there and see what they say. You know, they're not, they haven't gone down Main Street. Well, they go to Main Street maybe, but. I can tell you, watching out my front window, day in, day out. It's, there's not a lot of residents that live on Ocean Avenue. That's not the majority of the traffic. So, let's be mindful of that. And if they don't like it. What's the worst that they'll do? Slow down? Well, that's a really great thing. And I said that I participate, so. You can put a speed bump in front of my house and I'll tell you the noise is really bad. If anything, I want to make sure it goes all the way to my fence so they don't dive around a.
Yeah.
Speed bump and potentially, you know, injure. Life and property, uh, because of those behaviors. Because I watched people drive down there. They're not our residents. That are doing it. So I, I, I feel like, let's give it a shot.
It's often, uh, our beach too.
Oh, I've had a Greyhound bus with a car on the back. While we were trying to move my RV in, um, my study yard. Past us and I'm shocked that I wasn't taken out. So. You know, it's, this has been an accident that needs to happen. I'd rather it not happen. And when vehicles go slower, everybody has a better opportunity. How many times have we seen people go fifteen miles an hour in any of these streets? So we make them. What's, what's wrong with that? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, councillors.
Aaron, sorry, Mr. Morgan. Aaron also has a public comment he wanted to use.
Okay, okay, I'll wait till Mike. Okay, thank you.
Um, yeah, the RV thing seems to be the biggest issue that I've heard of the area. Get up, get reasons, solve a lot of our can issues. Sometimes I'm going to get garbage out of them. Before they sent, well. Didn't like that idea planning, that was somehow due. One way of part, where it turns left on the edge and just sort of. We could do living on that street. They don't like that. So. I think the rubber speed bumps, that sounds like a great way to go. It's, it is a lot of money. I heard it from guys all about their candy for Katie. Everybody on that street usually finds like it's finding condition, then you don't do something to properly, it affects everybody without. How, he likes to put a chair. So that's a really good. Finding out this, just. Too many big opinions. So I think the, if the, the community wants them on ocean, I, I hate them. If the fire department says, okay, bring the trucks over while less than a study, that's been issued past. In section, you guys got stops like that. For sure. Can you study for months? But there was a long study, there's several stop signs. Get everybody, get your chest away in, so you guys got it right. Yeah, I, I support that. Everyone's a case, it becomes a real big issue.
Thank you. And Katie, I guess we were going to read.
Aaron, just saying that, again, this is from Aaron Bocken in, hoping to be here. Um, thank you for continuing to pursue this item and keep the ball rolling forward. As I've shared, that, uh, all of our streets have, uh, speed issues. And without realistic enforcement by law enforcement, passive measures are a great next step. To help enhance the road safety of everyone. I hope that you do decide to support the staff recommendation and would be happy to have one placed in front of my residence. He lives on view. Editorial comment, I do again question the need to have a trial period for this project, but not for others related to traffic. Safety such as stop signs and crosswalks that have been or will be installed elsewhere. I respectfully suggest that all meetings, notice, uh, noticed agendas and the like are the standard opportunity for the input. Has been used in the past. Don't understand why this project was chosen not standard. Also, I sincerely hope that the city has not already partnered with the school. They do, if they have not, that they do so this week to help educate parents of the desired route back out of town. And to bring awareness to the issue of our fifteen mile per hour speed limits on most streets in town. And an amount of distracted driving, putting your cell phones, for example, when leaving town after dropping your kids off. I'm sure the school is already sending out information to parents as school starts in this.
So in the staff recommendation, we have the, the two rubber speed pumps. We had the city planner working with the council to designate Vane to Trinity as truck routes. And we had directing city staff to working of the Trinidad Elementary School. I guess my only question is on, on item number one. So we're, we're saying the staff recommendation exactly for the pilot project, right? For the two rubber speed pumps on either Ocean of View. And I heard the council say that ideally we do both. But also just make sure that, how are you recommending the communication happen? So you, are you saying you put signs up first and then put speed bumps or you put the temporary ones up? So you, are you saying you put signs up first and then put speed bumps, or you put the temporary ones up with the sign?
I personally, I think it's better to put signage up first and have the public here. Uh, again, we just want to. Being a number one on the safe side, number two, it never hurts to have more input on anything. You know, just to say, well, because I, I've heard it so many times, uh, matter of fact, in Rio del, we did this large gateway project. We had the, the bulldozers, everything out there and then two of the business owners came over and stopped them. Because they didn't, they said we didn't know it was gonna happen.
Well, you'll never hear me argue for less communication. So, communication is good. I just, what would be the. I mean, it was gonna take a while to order these anyway and get them installed. So if we could put the sign, I mean, I could see a scenario where we put the signs up. And start getting feedback as we're like, we're like, we do it in tandem and parallel, so we're really not losing time, right? In that model.
One of the things I, I didn't wanna mention after Karen mentioned. After she mentioned about, like, then they have to go all the way to the end of the, to the side of the street. And I'm thinking that, for instance, on Ocean, there's no center. Which means that I think people will swerve around and to the other side. Which means probably we're gonna have to put two on each street in order to be effective. Or else people are gonna swerve around it and maybe create some, some accident.
Okay.
Yeah, we absolutely have to make it that we're not encouraging people to drive in, you know, off the main thoroughfare, right? So ten and a half, I don't know the dimensions of our streets, but they need to, the, the streets need to prevent people, I'm sorry, the speedhumps need to prevent people from driving.
Agreed, yeah.
The, the streets all have that side parking gravel or is it somewhere? Some drains?
We just can't leave enough room between the fence. You know, wherever it's put, it just has to, I mean, so site specific, right? Ten and a half feet might work somewhere, but you need fourteen feet somewhere else. So we just have to be mindful.
We have mentioned on the. Oh, with the street, the, the, the street would be double.
The streets vary in width, you know, right away is anywhere between forty and sixty feet, Trinity Street, sixty feet. The collector streets over here are forty feet, but the asphalt isn't all that forty feet. So we, each street has a little different dimension on the width. They're not uniform, the asphalt. You know, Ocean Avenue is a little, is kinda narrow.
And has parking on either side of the asphalt.
Right.
I think the. And the guidance could simply be to assure that, 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 that there's no ability to go around.
And you can never underestimate. You know, they'll, just when you think you got it all figured out, they'll show you others.
Right. It may affect the cost, but it doesn't matter, right? The cost. In this case is not an issue as long as we don't create one problem that's much worse than the first.
Yeah, there are unintended consequences sometimes of these kind of things and that's why I think having it as a pilot is a good idea.
Well, and marking and flagging them, sorry, marking and flagging them is very critical as well because, um, the city has been. Uh, seen damage claims for just the smallest odd holes that have had, you know, minor damage to someone's wheel or rim. And if you put these things up, you aren't paying attention. There could end up being a liability for the city. So, uh, you know, we're just trying to calculate all these things and we've got an opinion about the project. We've heard about the project and opinion, but we just wanna do it in a way that it's protected in the city's best interest.
A rubberized thing across asphalt into gravel.
Well, I don't think it, I don't think we could. I think it would only be on the asphalt. Like, you're not gonna go into the edge. So, so like where people park today, a, a speed bump wouldn't go off the edge of the, of the road. There, there wouldn't be a way to take it all the way to their property.
Right.
Generally speaking, I'm saying two by each street. And, and that position them in a way where more than likely they'll come towards the edge of the asphalt. And there would be like, um, an opening towards middle that would not be large enough for a vehicle to go through. So somehow, if, if both tires don't get, uh, the speed bump, at least one of the tires would have to hit the speed.
So kind of a side by side, same parking.
If somebody's crazy enough to wanna swerve into the gravel and then.
Then we're gonna, yeah, if we have that.
Right, if, if the pilot shows us that we can't achieve what we want, cause people are driving around, then, then, then the pilot.
If the RVs and stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, yeah, in theory, and if somebody's parked there, they can't go around, but you know, or, yeah.
Well, the other thing, you know, just since we're talking about it, you know, there are the, uh. Like the A-frame sign or whatever, uh, you know, so, so we could put those on either side, like where we do have it. So this way, yeah, so, so this way, this way, they, they would have to hit that if they swerve around.
Yeah, that's good. So if you're gonna have signs anyway, rock them, cause I was thinking about, yeah, thinking back at home, but that's even better.
But that could be part of the pilot. Taking notes on that, what people actually do.
Let me take a pause on the council comments and reopen to public comments. Karen, if you have something you wanna.
So the only thing that I worry Eli about, trying to garner, you know, feedback. So the people that are gonna have the issue are the people that are not driving fifteen miles an hour. Who are those people? They're down at the porch. They use this. All the people that go when fish that have their kayaks that I know who they are, they pass by my house. Are they gonna be hurt? Are they gonna say they want that? Or even the parents who are dropping off their kids? Feedback makes a difference are the people who live in Trinidad. This is our community. That's the feedback that counts. I don't think anybody who's been driving faster than fifteen miles an hour is gonna say, oh, gosh, thank you. And why is that? It's going too fast. So just keep that in mind. It's all about perspective.
Thank you. Alright, what do you guys think?
I just had one question. What we're talking about now, uh, you know, the speed. Asphalt or rubber, just getting the, the. Speedhumps to start with, putting up signs. I'm kinda curious how much this all is gonna cost them. I, I see there's more to it than just buying them. So we're talking now about possibly. Using them on View and Ocean. Just trying to get an idea of how much this is gonna cost to do, which I, by the way, I like the idea, so it's not like I'm against it. But I certainly would like to hear the whole. Kind of looking ahead and seeing what we plan to do. It seems like we need to decide if we're gonna put up signage, what kind of signage, how much that's gonna cost. Come back with a total package so we can get an idea.
Do you guys have an idea now or?
Well, I mean, well, certainly, I mean, we have an idea about part of the cost, but not the whole cost. So certainly, the way I'm looking at it, if we did the rubber speedhumps, would cost a five to six thousand each. Get four of them, two for each street. So there you're talking about twenty to twenty-four thousand. Speedhumps and then, uh, the signage and the barricades, whatever that cost would be, which wouldn't be that expensive. Uh, but, uh, it's still, you know, there, there is an added cost. I would say if, if these are gonna run twenty to twenty-four, I would. Maybe put in, uh, at least a couple thousand for, uh, you know, for, for the others.
Signs and paper part.
So then it'd just be the barricades that would be the additional cost.
I guess that's different, but it works out.
Right, yeah.
Oh, I thought you were gonna do warning signs though.
Yeah, yeah, we would do, but we could even put the warning signs on the barricades.
It'd be possible to put this up and have Josh come back with some.
Well, he may be available in October.
Uh, are we gonna decide today about going forward or are we gonna wait till he comes back?
I would see like two options, uh, you know, one option is, uh. Simply doing, well, actually three options. One option would be a way to talk to them. The second option would be to, uh, put up signage without the speedhumps. And the third option would be to go ahead for the full-fledged thing. I would be hesitant to spend, you know, uh, twenty-four to. Five for twenty-six thousand until we get more input. Uh, and, and specifically, you know, I think like Steve was saying, you know, it, it's for the whole city. And really, you know, we want the city. I mean, you know, someone who doesn't live in the city, wants climate, fine, but certainly we're gonna weigh. You know, the people that live here, because they're gonna be the ones who're gonna drive here, you know, more often. You know, pulling out, going to the store, you know, going to work and so on and so forth, versus someone that comes in once a day.
Well, and I'd also like to have Josh explain the, sort of more exactly what we might be putting on the roads and, and we're still a little. Are we gonna put, you were talking about one stretching across and maybe two in an area. I, I'm not clear about what that means, but maybe we could get a clear explanation to it, so. Really feel like I understand exactly what we're going to be doing with these, these things. But I do agree that we need to do it. I love the idea of getting signage out, so.
Think of the lead for these speedhumps? Could be, you know, the signage up and get them on order.
And you know, if, if we put the signage up and get them on order, we're saying we're not gonna really count what you say. Cause we've already pressed the go button.
But it's sixty to ninety days is what we're.
And we could cancel it if we get. People are jumping up and down.
Well, after, I, I would imagine after ninety days, we may, we agendize it and bring people in for, for feedback and collect written and all this other stuff to get as much input.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what the cancellation clause is. We might, you know, we might have to go ahead at the pilot. I mean, I, I guess the signage would say, you know, this is a pilot program, please provide feedback to, you know, city clerk. Turned into C I U dot gov and, and we can also put some things out on our website, let people know what we're planning. I mean, I'm, I'm in that camp though. I think we can figure it out. I mean, I think we know that it's, you know, approximately what it's gonna cost and, and. You know, the sooner we get started, I, I worry about waiting till October, cause that's two months from now. And, you know, it'd be nice, I kinda see a scenario where we, we, you know, it's, it's, um. We do it in parallel, so we're ordering those speedhumps, getting, we all know that these projects take time. You have to order things, you're gonna get the guys set up to install. And it could take months. And so that gives us plenty of time to start getting feedback. So I'm kind of in the camp of moving ahead. With the understanding that, um, you know, it could be a little bit of an iterative, iterative process. Like we might have Josh come back in October and say, you know, this and this has changed or whatever, but at least we're moving kind of down.
Why are we waiting till? Josh can't come in September?
No, not the, not the regular council meeting day, it's not.
I, I, you know, I would. I would be comfortable making a motion to approve this, the staff recommendations, but with both Ocean and View. And the idea that we would do the communication things that Dave and Eli are recommending, but, um. But we do, you know, we kinda go ahead and get started with the ordering and getting things installed. But that's, that's my perspective and.
Don't think.
You know, put it to a vote.
That I, I don't quite understand is, if you order it, the same time you're taking feedback. With the feedback is no way of winning.
I guess if we got, you know, all of the feedback said, no, we probably cancel, so maybe it's, you know, we need to check on the cancellation. But, but in general, these things, usually it takes some time to even get the specs and get it on order, but. Yeah, we could, we could get stuck to your point, Katie, that we could get stuck paying for it and decide that nobody wants it. That would be. That'd be worse.
And that's why it'd be nice to have Josh explain this, we really are clear, so. I'm, I'm very much for it. I'm not sure, I'd also would be curious, maybe, maybe before September, if we could find out. If, uh, if Josh says, can give us kind of a timeline of what he thinks the timeline would be to get this all done. And maybe bring this back in September with Eli having more information. I'm just not really comfortable yet saying, let's, let's do this, although I do. I would like to do it. I mean, I think it's a really good idea. I just, I'm not clear about everything, but.
Well, uh, to your point, uh, our next meeting in September is only three weeks away. So we can get information.
Okay, so I thought. Okay, I thought Josh couldn't.
Tomorrow, like, can we start putting out the notice?
Well, he's, he's on vacation right now, Josh.
Could you also find out what the cancellation date is?
From traffic.
How much?
Yeah, and also what the cost is for shipping. His chances are we have to.
So maybe the September meeting, we have the, the communication has begun. We know about sort of the feasibility of ordering these things and not being on the hook for thirty thousand and then everybody says it's no good. And then what the total cost is, signage, you know, to cover the whole street. I was thinking ten and a half feet. But I gotta double that, right, to cover both lanes, so let's, let's, let's.
Installation too. What is there?
Public works.
Would we do it?
Yeah, I mean, that's what the recommendation here is, the public works. To, I mean, yeah.
Okay, good. Okay, so we, yeah, I'm on board too. If we can get more information by September meeting, I just thought you were saying that Josh couldn't get back to us until.
Oh, no, just that he couldn't attend.
Okay, if he can, yeah, if he can provide.
Yeah, well, hopefully we, we can get information from him before September meeting. Okay, okay, that's fair.
But since, uh, since we're putting out to the public, uh, about Ocean Avenue, um, maybe at the same time ask about Underwood, because. Uh, eventually that's gonna be something that we'd wanna do and we could do it all in one fail swoop.
You put it in front of my house.
Yeah.
A brick wall would be fun.
September, October meetings.
Yeah.
No traffic calming measures.
To give people lots of ways to, to engage, right?
And I think the deliberation here, just to let everybody know, is, is a good thing. I think you're in a safer place by doing this. Because I, what I heard in a couple of these comments were, you know, why, why are we doing something a little different here than we're not doing, we didn't do with crosswalks? Crosswalks and all the other walkability safety enhancements in town, those things have been programmed for thirty years. That's part of like a thirty year evolution. How do we get people moving through town safely? And I'm calling on Ocean Avenue, it just popped up, you know, in used, it's been discussed in the past, but not to the, to the level that the other projects have. And those projects also go through coastal development permit processes, which notify everybody within five hundred feet. You know, of the proposed improvements, so there's a big difference.
These don't have to go through that.
Not necessarily.
Yeah.
And I'm just throwing that out.
Yeah, yeah.
It's okay, not just crosses.
And we also have crosswalks, even with the flagging with the. But we don't have any speedhumps, so this is like something new for the community. Again, like I said, I always, after the experience Rio Del, I'd rather hear on the side of more public input than less.
True that.
Okay, alright, so I think I hear that, um, we don't need to make a motion, we're just moving.
Directing staff. Yeah.
Directing staff. Okay.
Actually, can I ask, I'm sorry, Cheryl, um, Jack, you had, you wanted some input from, from Josh. Maybe I missed it, but if, if Gabe and or Eli reach out to Josh.
Yeah.
What questions do you want them to, what does Josh provide?
Well, we were looking at, I'm curious how many, I wanted to see how many are we gonna have to have on these roads, or are we gonna be putting? Two on each one, or are they gonna talk about maybe four? Is that gonna be more expensive? Do we need signage? Uh, what was the other thing that?
Installation.
Yeah, well, we know the installation now. I, I found that out, um, there's something else that, I, it's slipping right now. Kind of pushed it away, I didn't write it down.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that, that I knew.
Oh, kind of overall, or something else.
I think it's just a little more details of the overall cost and the sizing concerns, you know, for people.
And, and then like Jack said, that what we could do is at the same time, put signage on, on the way to get input there also. Even though View and Ocean would be done first if it's approved. Come later, but at least we'll be getting some input now also.
Alright, I think I'm gonna move this along because we still have a couple more things. I just need, I think, less staff in some questions. I think we're good to go. Okay. Alright, so the next thing is the discussion decision regarding the fundamental vacant positions on the STR advisory committee. We have a volunteer, Diane Stockness, um, not, uh, at, well, volunteering, I was trying to make it another verb. Volunteering for the STR committee, so, um, is it just that the council would be approving that, Eli, is that, or disapproving?
Right.
Okay.
Consider it.
Consider it, thank you. Uh, so I would be. Uh, so I would be in uh very comfortable to support Diane in the role, given my time to her on the planning commission. And the work that she's done with the S T R committee, um, that would be my, my two cents.
I would second that.
I agree too.
Any, okay, any opposition? I don't see any. Uh, how about public comments regarding Diane Stockness volunteering for the S T R committee? Okay, then back to the council.
I move that we approve the appointment of Diane Stockness to the vacant seat on the S T R committee.
And I'll second that, oh, sorry, Jack.
I just, it says a recommended action is confirm Christopher Slay's nomination too, so we're gonna do both of those, you need both of those, Eli.
And yeah, that's the suggestion, because uh, I think Stockness used to be the uh planning commission representative.
I see that. And confirm Christopher Slay's nomination, yeah, sorry, I missed that. So my my motion would include number one and two, uh, confirm Christopher Slay's nomination, planning commission. And uh appoint Diane Stockton, so it's the, uh, to the vacant position, I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor?
Thank you, Diane.
So, yes. All right, so the last thing on our agenda is a discussion decision regarding the city manager contract renewal. We we had made, had some edits made to the agreement, um, I would not say there were substantive, um. Or administrative uh changes, uh, so we're looking at putting that in the consent agenda for the next meeting potentially. And then uh for the council at this time, uh, the discussion is around approval of the contract. So do we have questions or comments around that, or? Okay.
The uh parts that were in yellow, were those by our attorney?
Yes, yes, they're either, yeah, depending on the view you have, either red, red lines or.
So point of order, we're approving the inclusion of the contract in the consent for next meeting.
I believe so.
Just so that it can be a public, yeah, cause we're, the public hasn't seen the contract, so I just wanna make sure, okay.
That's correct, yeah, so I wanted to point out that it's not in tonight's pack, I think, too. All right, are there any questions or comments from the public regarding renewal of the city manager contract? Oh, apologies, it's for one year. All right, so with that, I'll bring it back to the council.
I move that we approve putting, placing the city manager's contract in the next council agenda. Consent, yeah. I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. All right, so next up is uh future agenda items. The things we wanna make sure we get, we we talked about the traffic calming, and so we'll bring that back. Um, I guess I would also mention, I I think Mr. Morgan spoke earlier about getting the planning commission and the city council appeals process. Documented, I think that's a fair. A fair uh task to assign to us, I guess the question is, would it be, you guys can tell me later, if it should be agendized? Or if it's just something that staff will will. Put the key to work on. And if we need to have a agenda, you know, have it on in a meeting.
Yeah, we we have to prepare, you know, whatever that process would be, and then bring it to the council.
Okay.
So I'm sure it it wouldn't be done in three weeks. But yeah, future, exactly.
Future topics. Come on, guys, and have all of them, have another one, fire. I wanted to talk about our volunteer fire department and the county fire response and. Uh, whether, you know, what our long-term plan is for that, um, all this wildfire talk has got that. You know, kind of top of mind, and then.
And if I could add to that, I think it's, I don't know if we're at the point where we have a presentation by LAFCO and or a representative county. To to just talk, just to, I think it's time for the whole, perhaps it's time for. The whole community to just be thinking about our fire response, cause it's, it's. I don't know, it just seems timely, but again, I just put that out there for consideration, I don't, I see that in my email anyway, there's another call for a meeting. Yes, a board uh group, so perhaps we can bring it up there, okay, yeah.
Yeah, I'm suggesting these future topics, I don't necessarily need for the next meeting, cause I I realize that you can't pull all this together by in three weeks. So it's just to kind of get it on the radar. And then the the other one, I think that's um, the council has discussed is the exit plan for Coleman. At the water plant. And um, you know, as Phil pointed out tonight, that he's been, you know, I had an eye on that, but the council needs to hear. What that plan is, and we need to, um, we really need to look at the financial side of it.
Agreed.
Uh, I'm not sure uh where this is at this point, that Jennifer was putting together a a kind of. Public relations around licensing and making people more.
And I'll get the dog license.
Yeah, yeah, dog license, uh, so uh I'm not sure where that project is at this point. I think we were kind of waiting to hear from animal control and see what county ordinances point so forth, but they don't have to go hand in hand. We did hear from animal control tonight. So, I guess I'm asking you, Eli, that you know where that project is at this point, and.
For the dog licensing?
Yeah, and like a, 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 just like a septic suit, a kind of.
Yeah, Dave, Dave can tell.
Yeah, so uh Jennifer and I talked about it today, we've got some really interesting options. For marketing and advertising that have come up, that I believe she's targeting September to share.
Okay.
With the council, as far as uh, at least two main options that we've been looking into, there's been some really interesting. Conversations we've had with uh the local radio, uh, program stations like K D K A. About public service announcements and and things that I think could really get the word out on a large scale. Uh, that'll involve some coordination between chamber, city, maybe other state parks and the county public works department. So we're working on those, and we're hopefully, Jennifer will bring a proposal, or at least some options back for the council to weigh in on next month.
So this would be a discussion?
Yes.
Right.
Good timing.
That's terrific, yeah. All right, um, anything else?
Are there any elements from the general plan that are ready for review?
Uh, not at this point, uh, and then Anton, uh, from the planning commission, you know, the rap. Yeah, I think they've addressed some other issues.
Right, right.
Yeah, we'd like to get them back on track, but Anton, uh, you know, is at each of the meetings, the planning commission. And yeah, cause I did attend the beginning of the last, the planning mission, it wasn't on that agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I'll put general plan down, this.
I think it's, yeah, I think it's just worth asking every time, just to see what's going on, because I know there are also ebbs and flows of permits and other projects that the. Commission needs to work on.
Um, so that, for some reason, reminded me of the period in the past, and so I don't know, um, I put in a key, like, A. And we don't need to have other agenda, I, or something.
Well, yeah, I mean, not now, but I mean, uh, once we, uh, yeah, uh, is is it? I don't think the council has actually voted on something.
Yeah, so they haven't.
So so, so yeah, once it's fine tuned.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're working on a community survey, I have a draft, and the staff is reviewing it, so we'll bring it back to the council for review. Okay, so that will be a future agenda, right? Okay. All right, I think that's it. We are adjourned, thank you, everyone. Uh, we don't do public comments for future agenda, um. But Paul, if you wanna, let's talk offline and I'll, I'll work on it. Okay, thank you.